All right, I'll call the meeting to order to start with the pledge. Pledge of allegiance to the flag of the United States of America. And to the real public, with this stance, one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all. I just need a motion to approve agendas presented.
I'll make a motion to approve the agenda.
Got a motion by Bo.
Second.
Seconded by Ashley. Just for the record, I I get kind of tired of hearing that through the rumor mill how Tipton is. And I want to state that Dr. Rob hasn't spent all of our money. Okay, so just to approve the consent agenda, the bills are in there. Everybody sees the bills, correct? Right or wrong?
Correct.
That's right. So, all right, moving on. I'm sorry, yes, we do. Everyone in favor?
What do we vote on?
Consent agenda.
Approve it?
Yes.
Well, I want to add a couple of questions before we vote.
Have at it.
Yeah, I made a mo- I think I had the motion to approve just the agenda. Yeah, I didn't approve.
Was that my motion, Amy?
Yes.
Yeah, I'm sorry. Yeah.
Just the agenda. Seven oh. Now, I just need a motion to approve the consent agenda.
I just have a question on the new prices for OPA. Is that a little or a lot?
A little. It's in our contract. That is what we're able to claim per miles. So, we really don't really what we're able to claim per mile. So, we're fine. Senator, we don't contract.
That's a big one. That's a big bill.
Yeah.
Transportation. Any other questions?
The only other thing I wanted to say, like you mentioned the whole bills thing. The only thing that I'm aware of, we don't see is a breakdown on credit card status, correct?
Amy. This just comes on there is.
Right, so we wouldn't know what all those expenses.
And anybody who's curious about that, treasuries and stuff.
So, just need a motion on the consent agenda in a second.
And I'd also add, Dr. Rob does not carry a credit card or a checkbook, right? Just your checks or use a credit card.
But you approve POs, right?
I approve POs.
Okay.
That are in their budgets.
I'm making a motion to reapprove the consent agenda as presented. Seconded, seconded by David. All in favor? Seven oh, Amy. Moving on.
We are in a transition, so I'm going to do a little bit of an intro here. We have Missouri Association of Rural Educators here. And that would be Jerry Cochran, who used to be the superintendent at Coal Camp. And we also have the Missouri School Boards Association here, John Downs and Linda Quinley. Now, Linda, where were you before your?
Most recently at KCS, but most of my career at Fombi Public Schools.
Right down the road. You're in Fayette, even in our conference. So, we have some representatives from both organizations here, and I know not everybody knows this, but Dr. Robinson is retiring after the end of next year. That's the final year of my contract. December of 2022, I asked the board for a three-year contract. They approved that contract, and I've held to that contract and not asked for any extensions since then. So, I planned out my career. This is the best place I have been. This will be after next year. It'll be nine years. It's a capstone to my career. I've enjoyed every minute of it. A lot of things are hard. A lot of things are difficult sometimes. We have to do a lot of communication, but Tipton has had, we have a great school system. We really do. We are a great small school. We have PBIS that is gold at our elementary school. The high school has moved to bronze this year. We have some behaviors in check that teachers were concerned about. We have a new literacy program. We have Project Lead the Way that has come in. We have made so many improvements. We've gone one-to-one with Chromebooks. We've rewired the entire school throughout the pandemic. We have an entirely new HVAC system that's saving us up to 30% on our bills on heating and electricity. We have upgraded all of our security systems in our building and controlled access. We have cameras. We have a new central office, even though controversial, it was the direction of the board in 2017. Not a new building. From the early 1990s, this building was built, and we've been able to defray some of our costs with their own bus services to the tune of $100,000 by letting them have the building next door and the parking out there. So, over five years, we're going to save $100,000 on transportation. So, we've done a lot of good things in the board, and that's just a short piece of the list. But we also have Lady Cards going to the Final Four for the fifth time in six years because we got to put another champion poster on the wall over there. So, a lot of sports and activities being very successful, an exceptional ag program, a DECA program. We've got FBLA. We do a lot for a small school district. We get a lot out of our dollar. And one of the best things that we have in this school district is a great group of teachers that are committed, a community of learners that are committed to our kids. So, I'd love being in this district, but next year I will spend a lot of my time and effort in transition with the new superintendent that the Board of Education will have a process by which they choose that superintendent, and Mayor and MSBA are both here to give them some options on how they're going to do that in the interest of transparency. That's why we're doing an open session, not a closed session, some kind of a secret meeting. We want everybody to know how we're going to choose a separate superintendent, because in 2017, I was the last hired superintendent in the state. August 1st was my first day. So, this is year nine coming up, and I intend to finish strong and do a good, clean handoff of a baton to someone to take it even further and to continue to push into kids and our teachers and our programs and to rise to the challenges that come up in any district. So, I'm very proud of the fact that I spent my last, I'm going to spend my last nine years here. I'm very proud of the administrators that have been here. I'm very proud of the teachers that have grown here, not just because of me, but because they all work together. So, without further ado, we will have Mayor come on up first, Jerry Cochran. You have some handouts for the board, and then I'll give you the podium up here. There's a microphone here, so we do want you here, Jerry. Well, I thank you, Dr. Robinson. I would concur and echo the sentiments he talked about, you know, the school here at Tipton. Doing 18 years and living 30 years at Coal Camp, always looked and respected, you know, the school district and the things that you all have accomplished. And I'd like to echo too, good luck to the Tipton Lady Cardinals. It won't be easy, but you're back to the Final Four, and that's wonderful. Real quick, as far as, you know, our process at Mayor, Missouri Association of Rural Education, we're proud of the fact, I think we've done more searches in Missouri the last few years than others. But at the same time, whichever way you go, you're going to get a good, good product. You know, you got two great representatives from MSBA here tonight, and hopefully I'd like to think that we're similar in what we do. It's just whatever you're comfortable with. But it is an open objective, and it makes it transparent as far as the process goes to select your new superintendent. It's the biggest decision you're going to make, so hopefully you'll, you know, take that into consideration and really sit down and go through things really thorough as you make that decision. The book lists I handed out there to you are pretty self-explanatory. We'd like to think we have a process. I think it's similar to other processes, but we break it down into like five steps. We first start to assess the district, which we do. And if you turn on page 21, I think it is, that's a vacancy notice that we send out mail out to all the school districts in the state of Missouri. We don't send them to St. Louis and Kansas City, but pretty much everybody else receives that, you know, to let them know that you've got an opening. And I think another strength of our search is our recruitment. We get out and go to all the meetings. Kevin Sandlin, who's my boss, Executive Director of Mayor, he covers half the state. I cover the other half the state of the superintendent meetings, regional meetings, each and every month. So, we get out there, we'll see people, talk to them, and do that recruiting that way. You know, and if we do do your search, after we recruit, we have a deadline. We get those applications in, we'll screen them. I'm one of seven consultants with Mayor. I will share those names, and so we'll have several eyes on those applications. So, it's just not me looking at them. The other consultants that work, the other parts of the state will also give me some input on those applicants if they've heard of something. But I do the bulk of the screening as far as calling and checking out those applications. Then I would come back to a board meeting, a special board meeting, and bring all the applications to you. We would review those, talk about, you know, what you're looking for, and I can tell you all the, you know, the good and bad of all the applicants, and you can look at all of them as we go through them. We would walk you through the process of setting up interviews. That would be my job. We try to make this as seamless as possible to where we do most of the work. You get the results, and then you make the decision. So, you don't have to receive the applications. They come to us, but you do end up with them, and you do keep them. So, once you get the applications in, we would come back at a special board meeting. You determine how many you want to interview, whether that's two, whether that's four. And we can never guarantee how many applicants you're going to get, but by virtue of what many of the things that Dr. Robinson said, I think you should get some good applications. I think you should get several. So, it should be a good job out there for somebody to make a move up or for somebody to break in. So, I think you're going to get some good applications. We set up the interview process. We provide you with some questions of what to ask, how to score those answers, provide you with some questions that you don't want to ask. And you do the interviews. You make consensus and make a decision. The board president usually would give me a call, tell me who you'd like to select. Usually you call them and offer them the job, and I call the other applicants who do not get the job. Like good cop, bad cop kind of deal. And so, we kind of do that to take that off your back there. And then afterwards, once you do select somebody, we've got some follow-up PR stuff that you can put in paper, release to the staff. Plus, we're putting a pack, a good packet together for that new superintendent to come in, especially if they don't have any experience. So, we follow up with that new superintendent during that, you know, transition period when they come in July 1st and meet with them or get them on the phone and talk to them and talk them through those kind of things that they need to know as they process through. Hopefully, you'll get somebody with experience, and you don't need as much follow-up as far as that goes. It's not an exact science, but at the same time, you know, we think we've got it down pretty well because we do this so many times. The turnover is tremendous in the state of Missouri the last three, four years as far as superintendents go, and I think John and Christine both, you know, Linda would both say that too. And, you know, they've done some quality searches as we have, and what we would like to offer our services out there, I think that the cost is in there. It's a straight cost. There's no add-ons. It's based on the number of students in the district, and you can look at that as far as you go there. And we will come and meet with you as many times as you'd like us to meet. Usually, if we're selected, we'll come back. We'll go over the criteria you want to go. Then I'll come back again with the applications and set up the interview process and walk you through that. So, real quickly, gone through that. Don't want to keep your board meeting too long. Questions, if you've got some, I would be more than happy to answer.
Can you talk about the hot hiring periods? Like what months are people being hired in? I don't know if you have percentages.
Good question. And we look at it two, three different ways. I think some people like to do it as quickly as they can, but I personally, and I see better, I think you're better off waiting until after the first quarter of the school district, which is two-thirds of the way through October, because I think then prospective applicants kind of know whether they're on the move or not. I think if you try to do it before the end of the first quarter, they're still getting the school year started. So, I would, I would kind of propose, you know, you close early December and interview, you know, right after that. And that way, if you do that, you could have that selected person come to at least six board meetings before they take over because they're going to come, and they're going to want to sit in and watch your board meetings. Now, it is your search, so if you would want a quicker search as far as, you know, ending it before Thanksgiving, even before that, that can be done too. But I think from my opinion, I would wait to close it first week of December, hire that person the next week, and then, you know, I think you're going to get good applicants that way. So, you never know. It's, to me, one of the most important things to attract candidates is what you're offering that candidate. You know, sometimes a salary is a touchy situation, but I think you've got to make sure you're offering a competitive salary from your area here. And, you know, we can provide you with numbers like that, what somebody's making, whether it's Smithville, whether it's Coal Camp, whether it's California. We can provide that information too. I mean, it's available out there on Desi's website too, but I think, you know, I would wait till then, but again, that would be totally up to you. One more thing. This is one sheet of why we think you should contract with Mayor. Just some things there for you to digest. But if you've got some other questions, I'd be more than happy to try to answer. That's it, Terry. I appreciate it. Thank you for the opportunity, ladies and gentlemen. Good luck either way.
Thank you.
Thank you, Dr. Robinson. This is what you want me to be close to? Okay. Thank you. I'm a roamer, so I will do my best to stay. It's good. It's good. Thank you all for having us tonight. My name's Linda Quinley with Missouri School Boards Association. And John, who would be the lead consultant on this search, John Downs, is here with me as my partner. So, very quickly, I want to reiterate a few things Jerry said. You're going to have a great search with either one of these organizations. We, of course, as your board organization, would love to do the work for you, but John and I both have a lot of public school experience. While my title is Senior Director of School Finance, I also now oversee our member services, which happens to include superintendent search. And so, we've had the opportunity to work on several of those this year. As a school board organization, just sharing with you that we are a private not-for-profit. You guys know that. We are a membership organization, school boards only. And we've been around a very long time. We've been around since 1936, have done well over 600 searches and have been doing searches for 40 years. So, we also, like Mayor, have a lot of experience in that. Love your mission and vision, and just know that when, as we're looking for candidates, one of the big things is for us to help you write a job description and questions and involvement that really focus on making sure you find a leader that you think can mirror and match that mission and vision. I'm going to turn this over to John and let him introduce himself real quickly and talk to you about what the work will look like.
Hi, John Downs, former superintendent at the Hallsville School District. In 1997, when I started in Hallsville, we were in the same conference, but it's been a while since I've been at the Little Dixie Conference. It's a long time ago. This is our outline of our process. I think what you'll find is very similar to what Jerry just described to you, that Mayor would provide you with our exception being the post-search support, which is the part that we're very proud of with respect to our process. I'm not going to read all of these slides to you, but you had asked about the timeline. As Jerry said, I would recommend not going too, too early. We've crafted a sample timeline for you, but again, it's going to be at your discretion as a board, and we're going to work with you to help you through the process that you feel will be best for Tipton. But we would suggest as well, waiting until after first quarter. If you go too soon, people aren't certain that they are ready to leave their district yet if they are acting as an administrator. And hiring season, as you know, typically is in the winter. And so, this timeline is just an example of the eight-week process that we would normally recommend to a school district to follow. In that process, there are a couple of options that are available to you. Many districts elect to do an online community survey. We are happy to facilitate that for you so that you don't have to fool with trying to solicit responses and gather them and sift through them yourselves. We will take care of all that. Some districts like to host a community forum, one or more community forums. That's an option available to you as well. It's up to you to decide what you think will work best for your district. And then we take all that information, we synthesize it, and we produce a report for you that provides you the most important key findings from either the community survey, the forums, or both on what's most important to your community as you look for your next superintendent. We do recruiting as well. We post throughout Missouri on all of the different websites. We post on our website. And then we also do outreach in a number of other ways. We engage with college and university prep programs where they are training up superintendents to find out who's moved through their system and is now ready to be on the marketplace. We use social media, of course, and we talk with people who are in districts currently to ask them about the possibilities of making a move. One of the big benefits that we provide is our superintendent liaison. We have nine recently retired superintendents who represent different areas of the state, and you can see where we are. I am that green area, Regions 5 and 6, and so we have, almost all of us came out of the school districts within the last year or two. So, we have lots of connections across the state. We're engaged with other superintendents and school districts throughout our region. And so, that's a real strength of our offering, that we have those current connections all throughout the state of Missouri. We post on our website your job posting along with the others. All of the job posts, we have a summary with your name and the basics, and then a link to the full job description and requirements as you decide them for your superintendent vacancy. And we would work with the board to create a job posting such as this after we meet with the board and talk through all of these items. What does the compensation package look like? What does the contract look like, and et cetera? There'll be lots of things for you to discuss and decide, and then we'll craft your job posting to match. We recruit from across all over the state. This season is still not concluded, so these are last year's numbers. But over last year, we had an average of 18 applicants per job, 38% of them out of state, 48% of the people that we placed had doctorate degrees. 25% female candidates that were hired, and 8% of candidates in the job pool were minorities. And so, we are committed to finding a diverse pool of candidates for you so that you have the opportunity to vet them and select the best person that's the match for Tipton. During the, after the recruitment process is underway and people have submitted applications, we have a process in place to keep you, as the board, updated on where we are. Every week, you'll receive the applications of everyone who has applied for the position, the full application, their letters of reference, et cetera, resumes, so that you can start going through them immediately and don't have to wait until the end of the process. After the application period has closed, you will receive some additional information, disclosures that are required by law, and then also any narratives that we asked them to complete while they were filling out their application. The board has input on that as well. Typically, we ask everyone, why do you think Tipton is a good fit for you? If there are other questions you would like us to ask applicants, we can do that, and then you would receive the written responses from all the applicants to those questions that you asked. And then after the period is completely closed, the board would meet, we will meet with you. You would go through each applicant. You'll have reference summaries, social media report for the people, especially the finalists that you select, and then information on their licensure. In that meeting, we'll provide you with candidates by tiers. We will vet all of your candidates and then place them into tiers, most qualified per the requirements that you have established. Also qualified, but maybe don't meet all of your preferred qualifications, and then folks who may not be qualified for the position. You don't have to pick who we have vetted as the top. You get to make the final decision on who it is that you move forward with in the process. We just try to help you with that process by sorting them into tiers before you even start that conversation. You'll receive a one-page summary on every single candidate. That summary will include their current position and what they're making, their history as an administrator in their career, and then also quotes from their references. Of course, you'll have all the reference letters that we receive, but we also have folks file confidential reference submission for candidates. We send that out to them by email, and so we take the quotes from those and provide those to you as well. We find that those tend to be a little more honest than reference letters sometimes. Screening and interviewing process goes the way that you think is best as a district, and we'll help you through that. Some districts just want to take that big pool and move straight to finalists. Some want to filter down by having shorter screening interviews, maybe identifying seven to eight applicants that you want to spend 30 minutes with. That could be by Zoom or in-person, though we request that you do the same for everyone to keep it fair. And then after that, of course, you'll narrow it down to three to four really high-quality candidates and have longer formal interviews with them. We will help you through that whole process, help you craft questions, help you set up the interviews. We'll be there to help facilitate the interviews. We'll be with you through each step of the process. After that comes the hiring phase. We, with every finalist, we ask them to fill out a pre-negotiation questionnaire. That helps to make sure that they are serious about coming and that they've talked with their families about coming and that they're committed to the Tipton School District before we even have finalist interviews. We conduct interviews in person, and then we meet with you again to talk through those interviews and help you in whatever ways we can as you make the final selection of your next superintendent. We also do what's called the DISC, which is kind of like professional slash personality inventory on the finalists. Some districts really like that as an additional piece of information because it provides you with more info about each candidate and what it is that motivates them as a professional. And you can see if maybe that lines up with your priorities as a school district. We support your negotiations through the contract phase between your board president and your selected candidate. We'll help you make sure that you get your background check done. That's something the district has to do, not us. We'll help you with crafting an announcement, and we'll even help you with a video if you'd like to create one. We have a sample one here. Figure out how to make it play. I don't know. Is there sound? That's okay. That's okay. Anyway, we will have your board president, if your board president would like, and this is Wright City's board president, who came and talked about their new hire, their superintendent for last year. And then have your new superintendent as well come to our professional studio at MSBA to craft a video, which then can be released to the community to introduce your new superintendent to everyone. Post-search support is provided by a team, and that team includes me as the superintendent liaison for Region 5 and 6. And so, I am going to be available to your new superintendent through that. Lisa Nieder, who works in our Leadership Development Department. She is the one who would provide support in some of the direct services that we provide to you to facilitate that transition that Linda will talk about in just a second. And of course, Linda is an expert on school finance who provides support to new superintendents as well. Linda, you want to talk about these?
So, quickly, we start these post-supports, and we do really think this is what sets us apart. You'll see some numbers in a minute that show you that our superintendents are becoming less and less experienced as they move into the role because we have, as Jerry mentioned, transitioned so many superintendents. We've had so many retirements. We've lost a lot of expertise. So, our superintendents are younger than they used to be, so we want to make sure that our new hires are highly successful. So, we've created these post-supports to do that. We will have a jamboree day in July where it's a time to come into our office with leadership, do some team building, learn some very specific things about your APR, your finance, and those kinds of things, just a jump start. And the new governance team workshop where Lisa would come in and work with you and the board and the new hire, set your norms. How do you want to communicate? What are your expectations? Help you bring that new hire in. We'll also give you six months of superintendent evaluation process at no additional cost. We'll also give you six months of superintendent evaluation process at no additional cost. I do a one-on-one, I come spend a day with that new leader and talk about this district's finance, help make sure they understand them. Where are your challenges? Where are your opportunities? And then have them know I'm a resource, right? I'm available for them. John, ongoing as needed for whatever, board relations, community relations. And then we have a finance mentorship that is optional for an additional cost. But all of those things above are included in our fee search price that you have. Here are some preliminary numbers, really just to go back to that. We've transitioned a lot of superintendents, like Jerry said. The last couple of years, there have been over 90 superintendent transitions in the past couple of years. This year, it only looks like 55-ish. We have 51 right now that are open in the current year. Season's still, it's getting late, but it's still open. But you can see here, it's hard to see, but only 12% of the new hires this year, regardless of who did the search, are sitting superintendents. Going to, that we're seeing them leave the field, so we're seeing less movement of superintendents, and we're seeing more hires of central office staff, assistant superintendents. And then that's the 41%, and you see principals at 29%. So the largest group of who's being placed in superintendent roles do not have any superintendent experience, which is a reason we think those post-supports are so critically important. On the right, our chart shows you that 59% of the placements this year, regardless of who did the search, are coming from within Missouri, but they're just moving between districts. 33% have been internal hires, whether they be a principal. There's one new superintendent next year who is a teacher this year, and she's going to be a superintendent next year. That's a big, big jump. But 8% are coming from out of state, so not very many. Our fee for the search is $4,400, and it includes all of those post-supports, similarly to mayor. It's a one-time, that's it. We don't charge it for anything after that. We do include those items that we talked about. We come with a guarantee that if, for whatever reason, a year down the road, either the superintendent or the board feels like this isn't a fit, it's not working, or they just have some other opportunity they want to take advantage of, we will redo that search for only $1,500 and any travel costs, which is minimal because we just live down the road. But really important for you to know that we are here to make sure that this is long-term successful, and if it's not, we're going to guarantee you that we'll come back at it again. So here's what makes us different. John, all those superintendent liaisons who are so connected across the state, who are outreach and looking for candidates for you, and those post-supports, that's really, really different for us, but we're really proud of that work. So we would take any questions you have. If we didn't hit anything, we know you have a very exciting topic of teacher comp tonight, which is one of my personal passions, so I'd love to stay, but I'm not going to.
I need a question about reference checks. Is that something that you guys do or the district typically does?
We do. We do, and similarly to mayor, we do all of the work so that you can focus on the candidate, and then we bring that information to you.
And I guess, I mean, I know we would post a range of salary, but do we also have, I assume in the questionnaire, maybe of expectation that we collect for candidates too about what their starting salary would be?
That is part of that pre-negotiation form. They fill that out. They've already seen the posting, so they know what you're offering, but they might fill out, like, I need medical insurance, I need life insurance, and so all the things that they would expect to have included in their contract, we know when those finalists come to the table.
Before you.
Yep.
Anything else?
Thank you very much for letting us join you.
I'm just curious too, just kind of curious. You keep mentioning the hiring season. When is the hiring season?
So the hiring season is late fall through now. Theoretically, you'd like to have everybody hired by the first of March, but we did just have to open up this week because superintendents got a job in, like, a small school soup went to a large school as an assistant soup, so now there's an opening up north. But pretty much the season is over. I think the timing that we suggested is a really good one for you. Get out, be one of those fairly early fall, but not too early, so that people are actively looking, and get that hire wrapped up by the end of January. I agree with Jerry, they want to come, sit in on your meetings, spend as much time with Dr. Robinson as they can. So I think an ideal time for you is exactly what he said. Let's get started in early November, get done into January.
I hired my replacement right around winter break, and that allowed the entire second semester for my replacement and I to meet first monthly and then every other week so that we could facilitate that transition. We were both four-day school weeks, and so we both had Mondays off, so we were able to touch base a couple of Mondays a month. It really helped to streamline that transition.
And if you, if you remember those statistics on who's coming in the superintendents, it is really likely that you will get a first-time superintendent. And so that time that they can have with Dr. Robinson will be really valuable in addition to those supports we offer. Thank you.
Thank you.
Thank you. All right. We have a positive, let's start with a positive. The declaration is by our governor. It is School Board Appreciation Month. I believe you guys have a certificate there. And also, our CTA has your dinner tonight, so they provide a blind-hog dinner tonight. That's awesome. I knew Derek would like it, that's why I said go with mine. So that's going to be waiting for you for a closed session before we come from there. So you have an analysis that I gave to you. I'm going to do a short presentation, it's kind of my warm-up, because next week we have a community forum on March 20th, and that will be at 6:30 at Como. And I hope everybody that wants to come will come. But I'm going to try to go through these slides quickly. But happy five-year anniversary. Well, sorry, let's go back to some more positives. I mentioned a lot of positives the last time, but there's been so many things that have gone well in the last eight years that when you do go out and look for a superintendent, this is exactly what they're going to look at. They're going to analyze us as much as anything. And so I think there are a lot of things that we can, we can push out there that have been going well in Tipton, that will bring a lot of good candidates and someone good to come in and take the helm. So now, happy anniversary, happy five-year anniversary. I heard it on the TV yesterday of the pandemic. Everybody I know just wants to clap for that. I can, what, nobody wants to clap, put a mask on and social distance and put the, okay, no, nobody wants to do that anymore. So we have some post-pandemic realities in education that I want to talk about because it takes a lot to process what happened since the pandemic hit, and Kelly Kohler was packing lunches in the cafeteria to put on the bus for Roxanne to go out and deliver to all the four little kids that were sitting at home, and me looking at Kelly and saying, what else can we do? Here, put several of those in my van, I'm going up here to the hill on the trailer porch to deliver meals, because all our four little kids don't know what's going on because they're sitting at home every day. Well, that's just a little peek into how much fun that was. We won't be celebrating the pandemic, I can tell you that much. But if you remember, everything closed, everything kind of got a little weird, and we learned that inflation wasn't transitory, even though there was one colloquial review that says it was. The new normal includes a lot of inflation. It's like a great reset. If you watch the Marvel movies, you know, when they talk about, you know, Thanos snapping his fingers, and some people know what I'm talking about, it reset the whole world and half the world disappeared. It's like, and they all came back five years later, it's like, it's all reset went on in the Marvel universe, if you follow any of those movies. Obviously, I do. My wife did cry when Iron Man died, just so you know. Oh, boy, this is on tape, she's going to see that. But anyway, the new normal. We had a lot of teachers that retired and said, I've had enough, I'm not wearing a mask, I'm not doing all this stuff, I'm not putting stuff online, I'm, I'm ready to go. They left the profession, created a ripple, like a big boulder in the pond, started rippling throughout the state. Good teachers sought, and they went to higher-paying districts. They had opportunities. New teachers, there weren't enough to fill those voids that were happening, and not enough kids coming out of college that were certified. And then we were discovered because some legislators started paying attention, teacher organizations started paying attention, that Missouri ranked last in the USA for average teacher salaries. So it was a perfect storm for legislators to pay attention. In fact, if you look at all 50 states, I think I've used this before, we rank 50th out of 50 on the percentage of state funding that is shielded for education in Missouri. That's from the state level. That's not local, and that's not federal. So basically, this was, I like to say it was by design, been the formula. This is what Missouri has done for education and for salaries and for valuing education at Fort Worth. They have left it to the local community to decide if they want to have a school. Now, some of you are old enough to remember Little House on the Prairie. Raise your hand if you remember Little House on the Prairie. And some of you even watched Little House on the Prairie long enough to know Laura Ingalls Wilder eventually became a what in the town? Raise your hand, teachers, come on, you know what she became? She became a teacher, that's right, she did. And so the local town fathers had to come together, and they had to decide what they were going to play, pay, I think it was Ms. Taylor, because she got married, and they had to decide if they're going to pay her, whether she's going to, she's going to have to take the coal and heat up the room, and then she had to sharpen the quills and what all her duties were. They had to decide what they were going to pay for Laura to be the teacher. And every little town, all that drove and all around, there used to be one-room schoolhouses in Missouri, and that's what towns did. The local town decided what their teacher was worth, and they put a valid woman, and they recruited them in. You know, they might have just gone to grammar school or finished the 10th grade or whatever it was, but they hired a young gal to come in, usually, sometimes a guy it would be, but they, they teach grades, they just had one grade they taught, right? No, it's K-12, K-12, that's what they do. So we haven't done that in a while, right? So the new normal, because they started looking at salaries, because now we're at the modern age, where we offer a lot for kids because they have to contend with the whole world out there. They changed what the minimum teacher salary was. Now, without reading the slide, teachers, what was the, what was the minimum salary before the Senate Bill 727 passed? Help me out, teachers, here. What was the minimum teacher salary? But we're not raising our hand, because I'm going to call people to guess. $25,000. It had been that way for many, many years, I want to say 15 or more years at least. It had been sitting there for a long time. It increases it from $25,000 to $40,000. This law passed in June 2024, because the state legislator likes to do things right at the end of the fiscal year when you're trying to make plans for the next year, and you've been actually planning for the next year since January or February. And they said, in '25, '26, this act increases the salary, and you're going to go from, and I got a little better look at it, but they said, we want you to increase your salaries all in your school districts, we're kind of pushing into you. We're telling you, local people, to come up with this, we might give you some state money. In fact, a little thing, the General Assembly may appropriate monies to a fund, a teacher baseline salary grant program, and we have been taking that teacher baseline salary grant program to bring our salaries up because it was offered. So it's now state law. It wasn't state law, they were just dangling some carrots out there. Here, you want to take this grant, you'll boost your teacher salaries up. So in '25, '26, the new normal, after the pandemic, after we kind of discovered we're last, is $40,000 for a minimum salary, $46,000 for master's plus 10 years of experience. That's what it is for '25, '26. This is how it keeps going, or where it started. In '21, '22, they offered a 38K minimum grant, it was not law, just if you take it, believe it. '22, '23, it was 40, '24, it was 40, '25, '25, it was 40. '25, '26, it has to be determined, and of course, they'll wait till June. It could be 40K, it could be 40, 46K, they may help us move up to there, but the new normal is here. And that may sound good, we can get a grant to move people up, but some of the teachers already know this. This is a piece of our salary schedule, it's down at the low end. 25 of our teachers will fall into this green zone, right here. This green zone is everybody who falls into, and this goes, I should move that square, and I will, so you can see it. Shouldn't have done that. Now we'll go slideshow. So everybody, everybody in this green zone, all the way down to 12 years, 13 years, 39.5, that means they get a $500 bump on the grant, they'll go to 40. But you could be trapped in this green zone for up to 13 years. This is what's going on. We've been taking this grant to get them there, and now if it comes up again, we can take it again, but that means how much of a raise for our teachers over that time period? Well, since '22, '23, they would be sitting at 40K again. So up to 25 people sitting there because they're caught in this green zone where our real minimum salary is, we're Tipton right now, which with a bachelor certification, certified teachers, 33.5, they have a BS degree with a sub-certification or a temporary authorization certification, I think that's what that stands for again, that you can do through DESI, or if you just have the sub-cert, is where we pay those teachers in the green zone. But they've been bumped up the past three years. Are we going to do that again for the fourth year and basically give them no rates? We basically keep our salary schedule right here. This is approved back in 2023. So there's some key questions we have to answer in my mind. New normal. Are our salaries for teachers competitive and comparable to schools our size? I think that's a fair question to ask. Let's look around and see what the going rate is for a school our size. So are we complying with the new south, new teacher minimum salary law? That's SB 727, which I just showed you. What is the cost to be comparable and competitive? And we'll talk about what we mean by that. And what cuts are we making to meet our budget? That's an important question. So let's start with an operational definition of what do we mean when we say competitive and comparable? Competitive means on average, okay? Comparable means the steps and the levels that other schools are offering. This is not with all schools. We are not going to be able to compete with Springfield Public Schools, we're not going to be able to compete with Sedalia, we're not going to be able to compete with Eldon, we're not going to be able to compete with Jefferson City, we're probably not going to be able to compete very well with California. We're just too small, we don't bring in enough money. So with like-sized schools, I tried to keep it reasonable, I looked at 16 other schools that are like size, so anywhere from about below 500s, all the way up to, I think, 768 is the highest one. This is what they're paying, and I use MSTAs data. I use four of their data points, what they're paying at the bachelor's minimum. Anybody notice anything right here? They're all stuck at 42 as well, not two, but as well. Bachelor's maximum, how much they pay a teacher with a bachelor's degree, all the way down. Then the bachelor's minimum, all the way down, that's the minimum they will pay for teachers with a bachelor's degree minimum. And then how much a teacher, the most they can make on their salary schedule, right there. So where is Tipton in this mix, right? Tipton with their enrollment, which is right in the mix with these other schools, their bachelor's minimum compared to those other schools, we're right on point, because everybody's at 40. Bachelor's maximum, we're actually about $217 above on average. The bachelor's minimum, we're under $140, which is negligible, that's not a big deal. But the salary schedule maximum, we're about $3,300 off. So the incentive to stay here long-term is a little off.
Hey, Dr. Rob, quick question. That slide four, where you showed a bunch of schools at 40, are those, do you know the percentage of those that took the grant to get to?
They probably all are. I would say they all are, because they're all sitting at 40.
Okay.
There you go. So there's your variance. So we can start asking questions. Are salaries for teachers competitive and comparable to those side? We're behind about $3,300 on the max salary we offer right now. This is '24, '25, not next year, current year, current year. We will not know what they do next year. I can guarantee they probably will go up in some way. Are we complying with the new teacher minimum salary law? The answer is no, because we're at 33.5 for a bachelor's degree certificate. The minimum for a master's plus 10 is right now 44.5, but it has to be 46. Are we complying with the new teacher minimum salary offer upcoming years? The answer is no, not yet, because we don't have to, but this is what's coming. So in '26, '27, after next year, we're going to 40K and 47K for those two markers. I'm going to have to grab my water because I'm starting to get cotton mouth. '27, '28, it goes to 40 and 48. '28, '29, it gets interesting. It's tied to the CPI, Consumer Price Index, up to 3%, and that's the law. This year, CPI was 2.9%. And they will issue that to us in January, and then you will have to put that on the salary schedule. I'm going to have to grab my water because I'm starting to get cotton mouth. Twenty-seven, twenty-eight, it goes to forty and forty-eight. Twenty-eight, twenty-nine, it gets interesting. It's tied to the CPI, Consumer Price Index, up to three percent. And that's the law. This year, CPI was two point nine percent. And they will issue that to us in January, and then you will have to put that on the salary schedule. Some districts are already saying this is going to bankrupt us. State says it's the law. What's the cost to be comparable and competitive to our district? Right now, if we're going to be comparable, competitive, make that thirty-three hundred dollar change, move everybody up to forty thousand, give everybody their years of experience. We don't put them down in the gold rooms of the thirty-somethings anymore. That's the adjustment. Our max would go to sixty-four, five, bring our salaries up to forty thousand. If yearly steps are five hundred per year, it's two hundred and thirty-eight thousand dollars added to our payroll. And there are a lot of districts in the exact same spot. This is not just Tipton. This is everywhere. So, what cuts are we making to meet our budget? These aren't fun. I surveyed, just to give you some background, through Mayor, who's here tonight, they helped me with this to get it distributed statewide, but a hundred and twenty schools responded. Half of them said they will need to raise their operational levy and they will need to make cutbacks. These are superintendents that were responding to that. This is what they're doing. So, our hard cuts, we've looked at attrition. Attrition can be slow sometimes. Attrition, another bad thing about attrition is it's random. You don't know who is not coming back until they tell you they're not coming back. And then immediately, you're looking at their position and saying, can we fill that position? Or can we not fill that position? Can we cover it? Choral music teacher, we have not hired that position back. That would be a hard cut. Business teacher, that can be absorbed by teachers we currently have on staff that have done parts of that job. The interventionist, we don't have to bring that position back. We started that during the pandemic when the kids were having a lot of trouble. It is a necessary position. But we can ask our teachers to be more proactive about their intervention and how they're going to accomplish that on an individual basis for their classes. Support staff, to be determined. Our title aid, to be determined, whether we need it or not. So, those are some hard cuts. We're talking about teachers. Here are some recent cuts. We cut the fax program and the teacher. We cut a lunch clerk. We cut an elementary teacher. We cut a half of a council. We used to have two councils. We cut half of an administrator. We have a half in this assistant principal now. I looked with duly roles this week. We can cut two bus routes and go down to four per day. We were at five and four, and it used to be five and five. At one point, we had six routes when I first came here. We can go down to four per day. This will lead to longer route times for students. The longest route will be a little over an hour. That's not ideal. I know the first question comes up to you, well, by law, how long the routes have to be? Anybody know? There's transportation laws or federal laws govern all that. I looked it up. Kind of the DESI website. Was the maximum time a student can ride a bus? It's not a good answer. The maximum ride time is set by the Board of Education. There are no restrictions on ride time within the Missouri statute or state adequacy board of education regulations. So, we can go to four routes. Our ride times will get longer. So, here's the summation. SB 727 is the law. We are not in full compliance. We're making significant cuts to personnel through attrition and services buses. If we suppress our salary schedule for the fourth year in a row, about twenty-five of our teachers will not see a raise. They'll be stuck again at forty thousand dollars. If we do not adopt the salary schedule as comparable and competitive and compliant with the law, we'd expect to lose teachers in the near future. And this will be an issue well into the future. It's not going away. It's not going away. Our APR is a good point. Accreditation's gone up the past three years in a row by almost ten points. If we don't retain good teachers, we can expect it will go down. Responding to the new normal, I believe, and this is my recommendation, to adopt the salary schedule in compliance with the law and ends the frozen forty K schedule for teachers. Continue to run a levy specifically for teacher salaries until it passes. There is one, April eighth, it is fifty cents. Defray as much of the cost of the salary scheduled by attrition and cutting programs and services not required by the law until we have a levy that supports salaries which are compliant with the law. Reduce or completely eliminate any nonessential maintenance. So, defer maintenance, which is not a good thing because you're just kicking the can down the road on what you need to do, and transfer only what's needed to the capital four, Fund Four, which we've already started that. So, the board has three choices. This is the board's leadership. We can all choose our actions, not the consequences of our actions. Some things are outside of our control. What's inside of your control is what you do now. You can table the recommendation I gave you. I think you can expect to lose some teachers. We already have teachers that are interviewing in other places and they're looking at opportunities. I know that because our teachers talk to us, because we're free and open with that. Teachers have financial goals. We can keep the current twenty-three, twenty-four schedule and make it the twenty-five, twenty-six schedule. Expect to lose some teachers. We will offer contracts this month with that old schedule. Fall further behind other schools our size in mid-Missouri, and it will negatively, I would expect, affect our annual performance review as we lose the people we've trained that know our kids, to make that investment in them. If we pass a new schedule, this is my recommendation, we expect to keep more of our teachers. We'll offer contracts this month with the new schedule. We expect some growth in our APR from our teachers because they're going to work hard for us, and I know that. And I expect our teachers to feel valued and appreciated. And I expect to run the levy again if it does not pass. Money, that's what we want to know about. Dr. Rob, you're talking about adding almost a quarter million dollars to payroll. Yep. At the end of twenty-four, twenty-five, I expect to have about two point seven million dollars in the bank, unrestricted in Fund One and Two. That's between thirty-five and thirty-eight percent is what I expect. That's what we budgeted for. We can start spending down this fund. We will not be in financial distress quite yet. But investing in our teachers is a good investment. This is an investment in our school. If you don't have good, great teachers, you don't have a great school. You have a building. I believe the levy will pass eventually. About two hundred and thirty thousand more to our payroll is a loss of about four percent, five percent, right in there of our fund balance. So, we can expect to be deficit spending. We will start losing our fund balance some. But we can do it. I don't want to do it because I want to balance the budget. Here's another thing that may come up. We'll find out in June because, again, the legislator doesn't want to tell us anything until the end of June. Right now, we're at sixty-seven, sixty, state adequacy target for kid, what we guarantee to get from the state. It could move to seventy-one hundred. That's four hundred dollars more per kid, eighty-eight. That could be two hundred thousand dollars very easily if they honor it. Unfortunately, the governor and his stated state address decided to tell us all that schools are failing, they're not doing enough, and we just can't keep throwing money at the problem. I did not like that. I got on TV about that. I had a few words to say because I said, hold on a minute. Public schools are building our entire communities. Teachers dedicating their whole careers to their kids. And you're basically saying, you're not going to follow the law that says it should go up to seventy-one hundred and what we should get paid? I can't control the governor, but I can say something about it. That story was carried statewide, along with MSTA and other school leaders. That could help us quite a bit, but we don't know what's going to happen there. It may be stuck here. The new levy of fifty cents, two hundred and fifty to three hundred thousand dollars that could generate. Here's one that's really distressing. Open enrollment. Got a little bit on that because I threw it on here at about four o'clock today. Get to that in a minute. Are we going to be decreasing in kids? Are they leaving us? Or are we going to increase kids? We're going to get kids from around the area. More attrition? There may be more attrition opportunities. We need to cut more if we can. So, sixty-seven, sixty, this came out early this week or late, that was Monday. It's predicted to be paid this year for FY twenty-five. Remember, I told you that they were shorting this a little bit? It pretty much, it was supposed to be sixty-seven, sixty this whole year. They've given us sixty-six, fifty, sixty-five hundred, kind of trailing along to make sure all the tax money comes in. See, this is in real time, the money comes in. They're seeing enough revenue now that we are going to be paid sixty-seven, sixty. They'll catch up in June. Open enrollment. We could see a loss of three percent of our kids, or we could gain a lot more if we accept them. That just passed the House of Representatives today. There it is. Just came up, March twelfth, as current as it gets. It's headed to the Senate. This is the fifth year in a row. I talked to Willard Haley a few times. He expects it's going to pass the Senate and this will become law. That is the general consensus on open enrollment. So, what would that legislation do? It allows students to enroll in neighboring districts on approval, eighty-eight to sixty-nine. This is how they voted. Brad Pollitt, he used to be the superintendent in Sedalia. He has been pushing this for quite some time. Five years in a row. Narrowly passed the House four times, never comes to vote in the Senate, but now it's over in the Senate. So, a three percent cap on the number of students that may leave a school district in a year. What does that cost Tipton if three percent of our kids decide to lose? To leave. Losing three percent is about a hundred and twenty thousand dollars per year if they're three percent leaving. So, that I'm going to throw in there is why things like having your facilities look nice, passing bond issues to improve facilities to draw kids. Anybody sensing that school is like a business enterprise now? What do you think, Ms. Bailey? Business? We got to draw customers? Sounds familiar from your perspective, doesn't it? We have to have a reason families come here to raise their kids and put them in school. It's why that bond issue for the multipurpose building is so important. It's why putting up a new fence. It's why fixing the track. It's why fixing the HVAC. It's why having good security. It's why all these things are important. It's why offering archery and basketball and all these things we do are important. This, just like Craig said at the beginning, Dr. Rob, is not spend all your money. We had the highest fund balance and at least as far back as I can look in the past twenty years in June 2024. Forty percent. You add in the restricted money, which is the Fisher Trust, it would go up to forty-four. So, the board's seeing everything and approves all bills every month and approves our budget each year. I think that's important to know because these two issues that are coming up, that are important, are not about Dr. Rob. It's about Tipton. It's about our kids. So, what questions can I answer? I saw Bo writing some down.
You saw me writing some down?
Yes. Did you write one down?
Well, I think the first question I was, I wrote down was that, and I knew this, we've received the grant, what, three years in a row? Is that correct, or four? I wrote four. That may not be right. Or is there anything that, I assume that grant is in place to help districts that are having trouble financially to meet these requirements, right?
Yes.
So, is there anything that you see that would prevent Tipton from collecting those grants a fifth year in a row?
No. All you have to do is suppress your salary schedule. Keep it just like it is. We'll just go claim a grant and keep twenty-five of your teachers at forty thousand dollars.
Do you know the total dollar amount of that?
This year, a hundred and twenty-five thousand dollars. Say it again.
That's what we claimed.
It's what we're claiming this year.
So, just to be clear, that if we accept this proposal, then we would not be able to collect a hundred and twenty-five thousand dollars, potentially.
That's correct. Because you've now moved your salary schedule in compliance with the law. And you're using your fund balance to do it. And you're using attrition to do it, cutbacks to do it.
Do you have any feel for what all those schools that were on that spreadsheet before at forty thousand are doing?
Yes.
I mean, are they waiting for the grant?
I have a survey to tell you what they're doing. And I can send it to you. It probably won't come up on this screen very well. And that's the survey I ran with Mayor. Let me think what I meant. I named it.
Why are you pulling that up? When is the application period for that? I mean, is that now? I know it's, we wouldn't know until June, but like, are people going?
Probably in July. I've got a handout from DESI that's several pages long on how we do that. These are all the districts that responded to the survey that I sent. And what they were talking about, though, when I said fifty percent of them are looking at levy increases or cutbacks, that's what they're doing. These are a hundred and twenty-two responses.
Yeah, I mean, yeah, because at the end of the day, I got a slide up there that says, are we going to comply with the law? The answer is yes. I mean, as a district, we have to, right? It just, how do you get to that amount is the question. And I think that all these districts are probably doing the same thing because of the idea that these grants are not going to be guaranteed, right? So, it's uncertain.
So, this column, you're looking at cuts. Go ahead and communicate with the staff. There's going to be cutting. Loss of people finding enrollment, anticipated cuts to teaching. This is all the stuff they're talking about. All I saw were cuts. Here's deferred maintenance, elimination of one point five FTE. No, we have to spend down our reserves to the point we're asking for a levy increase in April. This is what they're doing. Here's one teaching position. Door of the teacher teaching position. Here's an interesting one. Superintendent will retire and then use five-fifty rule to lessen stress on a full salary of superintendent. Plan to absorb the custodian bus driver to combine multiple positions into one. Addition of positions that are needed. None yet, but next year, three positions could be cut. I told you, we're not alone. This is what's going on. Reduce staffing, not replacing the band teacher, not replace sixth grade teachers. Do math coaches, elementary teacher, EBIS teachers, three support staff. This is what's rippling through. This is the new reality. All the way down. You have a local levy issue. Let's see, salaries have just passed, not many, some have, some haven't. The ones that I know of are Eugene Cole Camp and, Eugene Cole Camp, and Lynn has one on the ballot right now.
Dr. Rob, back in, when we approved the increase in master pay, when we worked on that schedule.
When we worked on the top end of it, yep.
Correct. And you said we were going to deficit spend, or how much was that amount that we were? Is that included with this two-thirty that we're looking at now, or is that all on top of that?
That's your new schedule, Kelly, that you see right there. It's not on top of that. This is what I would forecast. We will pay more in payroll. Two-thirty is what you pay more in payroll going for next year.
I didn't remember the amount.
And I gave you everybody on where they've moved to, so, yeah.
So, our total deficit spending, not just what this adds, our total?
The total more on payroll is two hundred and thirty, with the potential for you to go down about four percent, four to five percent, I would estimate.
Right. But what would be the total deficit spending? Dollar amount, if we were to accept this?
For payroll alone?
No, for everything.
For everything? I haven't figured out the whole everything. What do you want to do, the whole everything, like operations, all that other stuff?
Well, I mean, we have a hundred dollars. Are we spending a hundred and eighty dollars now? Yeah, I'm just trying to get an idea. I mean, we were deficit spending.
You will spend more in payroll. I do not have the new budget put together. I'm telling you just specifically about salaries, how much more you would pay.
Yeah, I know. I mean, we were deficit spending before. I'm just trying to figure out how much more this adds into it to see what our total dollar amount is. That's what I was asking.
And, and, yeah, that's a good point. And with the cuts, after we get all the cuts done, we'll know. So, in other words, unless you guys tell me to go hire the business teacher again and say, and vote four to at least four to three, I'm not hiring a business teacher back. They haven't posted for that job. I'm not going to hire the interventionist back. We haven't posted for that.
But we haven't had discussion on the business teacher or the attrition yet.
I'm recommending that, and I'm not posting the job. If you want to direct the superintendent to do that, you need to make a motion and vote four to three at least to tell me to do it.
But what I'm saying is, we haven't, we haven't, as a board, had any discussion on attrition. We were told last meeting that Mr. Culpepper and Triget were making that decision.
They were looking to see if they can fill it, and I told you tonight they can fill it. Currently, with who we have on staff. Who are we filling?
We want to know like the breakdown of how that's.
Maybe that may be close session.
I hired our teacher last year on the things she said in her interview notes. She currently in the yearbook. So, that was something she wanted to get back and do. So, if she stays, she would take over that piece we had. We had two classes this year in art that were extremely low in numbers, so we easily shift those classes. Graphic arts classes to pick up. Last year, whenever our business teacher was gone, family issues, Ron stepped in and helped out. Helped run FBLA last year, he done that at previous schools too. So as long as he stays, he would take over that piece to ensure that we didn't lose anything.
Even your computer classes, all that stuff.
We have the schedule for next year.
I think that's why we hire our administrators. Kind of getting off topic.
Well, the only thing is.
It's not really off topic, it's something that we haven't had time to discuss.
It needs to be discussed.
We're talking about teacher salaries right now, we're not talking about postings, we're not talking about teaching positions, we're talking about.
Yeah, but he included attrition, which adds a part of that presentation.
Might be one that is, we hire our administrators to run the buildings.
Yeah, but we don't need to be in the dark about it.
We don't, we don't micromanage.
No, we don't have to, but.
We're the ones that get the phone calls when they ask us why we're getting rid of stuff.
That's why you signed up.
I understand it, though, I'm going to answer the questions.
Okay, then let's get back to salaries.
So raising the salary as suggested will not actually change the dollar amounts the teachers are currently being paid. It just will mean that we will no longer need to collect the grant. Is that correct?
You will not be collecting the grant any longer. You will, you've had some teachers stuck there for four years, so they will get their four years of experience.
Stuck at forty, right?
Stuck at forty.
But they would still be at forty?
They would not, because they're going to get all their years of experience, they're going to go right to that level. So if they're the fifth year, they'll go fifth year, forty plus five hundred dollars per year per step. I'd have to look at it. You have it, actually, if you look at it on the salary option, you have everybody's salary right in front of you. If you can, and I always don't use names out loud, but if you look at line.
Oh. I think this is to be discussed in new businesses, isn't it?
It is, and I'm just giving you information, I'm just answering your questions, Kelly, not a problem. Does that answer your question? They'll get all their years of experience.
So right now, they do not?
They get years of experience below, from thirty-three, five up, that's what they get. So if you look at line, are you in that one, Ashley, if you go to line six? You can see a teacher listed there, it has a BS, line six. I don't know if you can see me highlighting that square for you. Where you see there at thirty-three, five this year. So if you look straight over, you can see that same teacher at step two, so she will go from two forty-five. So it's forty thousand is our base, your step two would be five hundred dollar increment. She'd be on the correct step as well. Any other questions for me?
Okay, moving on. Everybody's got the administrator reports in front of you? Any questions, now is time to ask. We have nothing in old business, new business.
That's your salary, that's your, sorry, your calendar. Still need to make a few little graphic changes there, Janey helps me with that. But it does reflect a similar calendar of what we've had before, a hundred and sixty-one days, some pretty generous breaks. That's what I'm recommending.
How many built-in snow days?
All of them. When you check on additional sixty hours to a schedule, you are forgiven anything over eleven, eleven oh four.
Okay.
You not have to make them up, they still pay you the whole amount. It is a little bit of crazy math, I understand it. I went back and looked at the book just to check myself the other day because Carrie and I were talking about it. It's like, let's make sure we're right because we only do it a few times a year.
No questions? State a motion.
Can we do that now, or do we want to get into it? Oh, yes, we are in it now, aren't we? Yeah, I'm going to approve the twenty-five, twenty-six school.
Motion by Bo. Seconded by Craig, all in favor. Seven oh, Amy. Next is consideration of dirt work, seeding for the practice field.
I made a little short video for us.
He did not be here tonight because he was out with kids. So I said, Mr. Twinner, we need a video, tell us what you're talking about. Let's see if this plays.
Hello, first of all, thank you for giving your attention to this project up here. Sorry I couldn't be there tonight, I'm at a FFA contest in California. Dr. Rob asked me to put together an email or a video for you guys about possibly renovating this practice field up here on top of the hill. I think you've probably heard from Dr. Duke and him, and now you're hearing from me, this really isn't a safe spot for football teams to be having collisions and practices on, particularly in the summer. If you just look down here at the ground, when you get this much traffic on an area like this, it's nearly impossible to keep grass growing, especially if you don't have water. Luckily for us, we do have water up here on the hill. But that sprinkler has to be manually rolled back, which would mean every two days, somebody would have to sit here for four hours and manually crank it back. And then on top of that, if you look across here, you can see you probably have, you probably have at least five feet of fall across the football field, so it's not an ideal playing surface for the boys to be practicing on. Ideally, if we could come in here and kind of level this out, or at least drop that down a little bit over there, where it would still drain all the way across here, that would kind of be the ideal situation. And then, and then we could come in and while we've got that, while we're kind of leveled this area off here, install some sprinkler heads similar to what we have on the football field down here. Grass won't grow without water, that's just pure and simple, and this is, this is a clay type soil up here, it's old field dirt, so you'd probably have to bring in some topsoil. I've gotten, you have a quote in front of you, I think, from Matt Biddle with Advanced Turf Solutions. He used to take care of Eldon's Fields when he was the ag teacher down there. And he estimated probably somewhere in the ballpark of thirty to forty thousand dollars. I think he's a little bit high on his, on what his dirt work proposal would be, I think you could probably get the dirt work done somewhere between ten to twelve pretty easily. And then you've got, you've got probably ten thousand dollars in irrigation and probably another ten thousand dollars in bringing in some topsoil and seed and starter fertilizer and those things. It's one of those things, if they're not practicing up here, they have to practice down there. And when they're, when they're practicing down there, that's going to turn into this up here if we don't have the space. One of the best things about having an active football program is it does require them to spend time practicing. When they're on this from July until December, it gets chewed up. So if you have any questions, I'm happy to answer them. I believe Dr. Rob or Coach D, or several of you guys have my cell phone number, so feel free to give me a call anytime. Or swing by tomorrow during parent teacher conferences, I'd be happy to discuss it with you. Thank you and good luck tonight. Um, votes, first.
Dr. Duke, did you have any additional comments on this?
Thanks for giving me the opportunity. I realize I've asked you for a great deal of capital and expense to put the football program in a position to be successful. But what Mr. Twinner said is absolutely true, that area is not safe. It's just. Grass is not going to grow up there, it becomes dirt and concrete, you're going to have kids that are going to, it's, imagine running on concrete in your cleats, that's what it feels like. You could go up there and move the water around, it's still not going to be effective from July to December if you don't do something. You know, we have had the opportunity to line that area, which makes it better as a playing surface that you can be on, a surface that you can actually compete on. But there's holes in hills and valleys, a few years ago, God love him, Tyler Bear fell down, I thought I lost him. The dip from high to low, I couldn't see anything but his shoulders and his head. So in reality, the surface is not safe. Is it big enough? Sure, we'll practice on it, but what Mr. Twinner said is true, we go down on the field to practice probably more than we need to. And if we continue to be successful, we're going to have to use the game field at some point during the playoffs because there's no lights up top. And it gets dark around five o'clock, five thirty. So there's going to be a trade-off, and the longer we can spend on that field, the less we have to be on the game field. The hard part of a grass field is that you, you really have to say no to everybody who wants to get on it. Right? If you want to keep it nice, when gym class wants to get on it, when local folks come and play on that field and it's used consistently throughout the year, it continues to wear on it. Right? That was one of the pushes for an all-weather surface, is that you can always say yes. We don't have that opportunity right now, so there's times during the season where even Mr. Twinner will tell us, you can't be on this field for the next two weeks. That's kind of tough, when you're not on a surface that you play on for two weeks, except for Thursday for about forty-five minutes. If you want to go up there and walk it, you're welcome to do that. I know several of you have, there's people in here who have coached on that surface, just not a safe environment and really it should be taken care of. And that's going to require a significant capital input, I understand that. But I think if you're going to make an error, make it on the side of the kids and, you know, currently there's a significant number of young men from third grade through twelfth grade who are participating in the sport that require that field. Any questions? Thank you.
I just need some direction from the board on how you would like this handled. If you want a recommendation from me, I can give you one.
I think just the major concern on that would obviously be the safety piece of that. I mean, I think you look at injuries and the cost of those, along with obviously the injury piece of that itself, that would be what I would, that I'm mostly concerned about. I think that if we can fix this and make it safer for the kids to practice on, I think that would be something worth spending money on. I would be in favor of doing this. Personally.
I don't know, I don't know if we can get grass established on there well enough for him to be going full board by July.
I'll have to move there.
Right. That's my own issue.
So is, is Mr. Twinner giving us somewhat of a bid and then this bid here?
I think he thinks it should be less, is what I heard when I'm talking to him. They say let him negotiate it out, bring it back to the board, let's have a plan. Or you can authorize a certain amount to get it done to Mr. Twinner, who handles all your grass, and say, Mr. Twinner, you've got X amount of dollars, get it done.
I can see doing some watering and fertilizing and seeding. This year, I don't think you can get dirt work done. That was the best one.
That's part of the reason I brought it up, because I didn't want to wait until June and say, hey, how are we going to do with the field? While we still have five months before, four months before we get going.
We were talking a lot, great differences, is it really we need to bring in a bunch of topsoil, or is it we need to cut off the high spot and bring it to the low spot and make it level?
He suggested either one.
Well, I mean, I don't know what topsoil is going to cost, but I guarantee it's premium. That's going to help some of the drainage, is it something we can look at? A dirt scoop, one of the farmers you got. I don't know, I'm just trying to think of the best way we can save money and still get what we all want. Is it cutting and then bring it down, or is it some level work that we need to do? Get the holes out, get the highs out? I'm in the grants, I don't think it's something we can cut on right now and have grass. There might be something put back for my, or for after football season is over, start early, whenever. I'm not a grass person, I don't know that about it.
Should see my lawn. We pay people doing it, it's so terrible.
I started listening to group feedback, my girlfriend's an old guy. Well, this really needs to be paraded, but topsoil, some type of soil put in it, that seed fertilizer and lots of water.
Is that all done by Jim?
Think it could be done by Jim, I just don't know if you're going to get your ass to the line.
You know, the growing season for grass, by the time you hit, the old timers always.
Was, was, was Twinner thinking about putting a paper system in? Or was that another subcontract?
He thought it would be from, I heard, ten grand, ten grand to do that, and he thought about twelve thousand to get the dirt and whatnot in there, so twenty-two, sorry, I think I added up thirty-two thousand dollars, is what he said, to get it all done. You wanting to come back with a proposal next week? Want to talk to him yourself?
I would be fine. Yeah, I mean.
I'm not a grass person. I can't do grass. But I do, we've got to do something with it.
Yeah, if there's something.
There's a lot of traffic.
If there's something that we can do to make it safer, I think we just look at options and make the right call on it.
I don't know if it's.
I just don't know enough about it.
If Dr. Duke's got enough room to half of it, we do quite a bit of work to practice on and then like a two-phase comeback after football season and do the lower part where maybe bring more dirt in, level it up then.
I'm hearing you want a full-fledged proposal from Mr. Twinner with cost estimates. Is that what I'm hearing?
How much of a timeline are we on for this? Pretty tight one, right?
Pretty tight, that's what I'm saying, next week, we'll come back and see, just for that.
We can do it next week.
What day works for everybody? Wednesday again?
Wednesday, we got the, don't we, I've got it.
Golden days here.
I'm watching heat out there, look at it.
Wednesday works for me, the nineteenth.
Probably meet on the football field.
Okay.
And we're going to have to go odd, four, six, it'll be dark.
Turn the light on.
Part of it anyway.
Okay, so you want to meet Wednesday, nineteenth, at the football field, five thirty? Do that? Will that give us enough light?
Yeah.
Five thirty PM, okay.
What time's it get dark now?
Later.
We're fine.
Seven thirty, gosh.
Oh, yeah, hey, it's Wednesday.
Okay, so I'll put that up.
If we go five thirty, I'm going to be crowded, but I mean, I don't have to be there, I can show up a little late.
I think, I think you have a minute at six, that's still.
Okay.
Whatever.
Six? 6, 6 o'clock, okay. No worries. Okay, 6 o'clock, Wednesday, 19th, we'll meet over there, good deal. Great.
Ready?
Calendar change. Uh, the teachers, many of them who are here, talked to Mrs. Pedagroup, and talked about changing when summer school opens up for their elementary, primarily. Kind of get a little bit of summer school all summer with the high school, with some of the additional hours and things that go on with Ag and whatnot. They would like to start, uh, run 19 days from June 13th, and then have Memorial Day off. So they would begin on May 19th. Mrs. Pedagroup, any? Same Memorial Days, moving it up.
That's what you want to do, and the teachers want to do it, then that's what we do.
She takes a lot of our kids from daycare, and so she fills a week also for parents, so they can send their goods to daycare, while we have a week off before summer school starts, and then we ultimately get them back. Then she lets people go for a little bit, then brings them back. It's just kind of a smoother transition, like we go from cool to summer school, and then daycare's gone. That lasts a month.
I'll make a motion to approve the summer school schedule change to begin May 19th, for 19 days through June 13th.
Got a motion by Ashley. Seconded by Amanda. All in favor? 7:08. And next you have the
Salary schedule. We need to know what salary, you're going to hire all of your teachers later tonight in closed session, we need to know what salary schedule we're offering them for the 25, 26 school year. What are we putting on their contract? Are we using the old one, or are we going with the recommended salary schedule?
Questions, comments? I wasn't involved for this before, so I've got acquiring question. Say we've got 25 teachers that are stuck at that 40 for four years.
Correct. Well, it'll be the fourth year coming up.
Could be the fourth year.
Yep.
So what was the jump that they had from before, and when we started taking the grant? Is it like seven grand, was it like, I'm just curious about
We were so far behind on teachers that had a master's degrees plus, now you're talking about master's degree plus. We made a big jump there because to bring ourselves in line to be comparable and competitive, it varied by where you were on the schedule. Yeah, some of them probably had a $7,000 jump because we were far behind. But it did not affect the lower end because we were taking the grant, taking the grant, taking the grant, taking the grant. But our actual salary schedule is 33.5, moving its way up. In fact, I think we started at 31 something, but we started to reach up. Then I held it back because the grant's there, and I save our money. But does that answer your question?
I would, so, yeah, if, I think I understand his question. I think if they're at the minimum, then when we went to, it would be $4,500 was the jump, to 38, and then it would be $6,500 to, from 30 to get up to 40.
Yeah, I would just consider, I was just looking over the timeframe, you know, because you know, they would never pass 77, where would they be at in their normal steps? Or are we
That's not normal anymore.
Well, I understand that's not normal, I'm just looking at the picture I can.
I understand what you're saying, though, I do get it. I don't, I don't, we didn't, we, and none of the other 17 total board members did not voice this on ourself. This is what the state of Missouri says is the minimum salary now. So now we're left to contend with it as a local school district. It was like the local dis- school district contended with, how, what are we going to pay Lawrence Wilder to be the teacher? They're telling us what we got to pay. They're telling us.
And hoping our levy increase passes in three weeks.
Right.
It's not something, I mean, tabling is, is an option, right? But if we do the 40 minimum, and we give a step to each person on that, what would that cost? Say a $500 step. What would that do to us budget-wise?
The only way I can claim the grant
Is no step, they have to be froze at 40?
They're, the state's looking, they ask for our salary schedule. They say, "Where are you? You're 33.5, how many teachers you got down there? Lisa files a paperwork, we show them, and they make up
That filing date?
The filing date?
Yeah.
It's usually with the start of the next fiscal year.
That's such a backwards, I, I don't
It is absolutely backwards.
Well, no, I mean, I get, I, I know, but my point in it being backwards is if, if, if it's mandated by law, it'd be a $40,000. And there's a grant in place to help those get to be $40,000. And how can you submit a salary schedule below $40,000 to qualify for a grant?
Is there a line to do it?
Yeah. I mean, at the end of the day, what, a lot of those districts are going to choose, they're going to keep their schedule, I'd assume, and then
That's what
Apply for the grant, and then, um, that meets the, meets the law.
Waiting on the state to raise the SAT and follow through with what they're supposed to do, which is fully fund us, instead of handing out $55 million to state educational agencies to distribute to private schools in the form of scholarships. See, this is what's going on, the privatization of schooling in Missouri, and it's happening in other states, this is what's going on. They are attacking your public schools, they're attacking your revenue streams on our own ballot. There's going to be a property tax freeze, right? Age 62 and older. They're going after every one of our revenue streams, and you have to decide as a school district, are we going to exist? Are we going to be Fortuna and Syracuse? What do we want to do? Are we going to start moving toward being Bunston? We have to decide. Because if you don't have these people sitting out here in the audience, you don't have a school. You got us sitting at a table looking at each other. We've got to have them.
I think the board, I, I don't want to speak for everybody, but I think everybody on the board, I guess I will speak for everybody. I believe all had private conversations, we all want to support the teachers and pay them a fair and competitive salary. I mean, all of us do, so it's not like we're wanting to turn our back on teachers and saying, "Tough luck here."
No.
Just a lot of, we're also, you know, we also have to look at the long-term viability of our school. Right? I mean, you can't, you can only deficit spend, but I'm going to guess 350,000?
Probably somewhere around there.
So long.
Yeah, that's right.
That's kind of scary.
Yeah. If you can't get the community to pass a levy increase, it will be a problem.
Which, again, you know, as we're talking through this, and I don't want to be the only one hogging this, is, I mean, I, it seems like we need to understand a little bit more about our funding before we make this call. We don't, we're talking about something on the ballot of three weeks from now, that would give us a little bit more understanding of that. Of where we're going to be
So what changes, if that, if it does not pass, what changes?
Well, we certainly
We know how much your deficit's spending, right?
What changes?
What changes in your decision-making?
If it does not pass?
Correct.
Then we have two options. We have to go to 40, or we pass your proposed increase.
If it does pass
You take the grant again, and you stay on the same salary schedule.
But it's, a lot of schools may be having to do that to survive at this point. It's the way it sounds like, I mean, with your information. We don't want to lose anybody, by no means. Absolutely not. But we can't, I mean, you look at spending 350,000 a year, we'll be gone in seven years. If there's nothing ever put in place. But we have to put hope in that our community will come and support us.
Mm-hmm, absolutely right.
In April, and if it passes, that makes this a lot easier to make that decision.
And I got to be honest, I mean, I, I just don't know if it's appropriate to jump ahead of the voters on it.
Well, and what the voters have to essentially understand is this, if you don't vote for this school, you will continue to lose. With all that attrition and everything that we're talking about, we can't afford it anymore.
But they have the opportunity to do that in three weeks.
Yes, they do.
We listen to the community too.
We're talking about jumping in front of them now.
You know, because we asked for a dollar, they didn't like that, so we come back with 50 cents, so
And I like Derek's
We really need to rely on our community to come through for us here.
And it specifies, like Derek said, who
I like what Derek said, hey, it's specifically going there.
So
I see a lot of pushback from the community. That's if, and no offense, teachers, you deserve every dollar you make, and three or four times that, we're putting up some of these things that's going on, but anyway, if we jump in and give you all a raise now, prior to the levy, then there's some of them going to say, "Well, y'all gave all the teachers a, a raise, you know, before the levy was even passed." You know, y'all can't be as broke as you say you are. I mean, I can, I can hear the coffee shop talk big time over that, and plus the drag you on the street talks too, so.
Unfortunately, we have to almost wait for our community where it's so bad, the school's shutting down because HVAC doesn't work anymore, before they'll pass the bond to put the HVAC on the roof. We almost have to wait to get to financial distress, which is unfortunate, that we have to wait till financial distress takes hold, and then they accuse us of not planning ahead, and you got letters to the editor to come out and say, "Well, we take this one bite at stake at a time." Well, we are taking it one bite at a time. This is what we're doing. We're trying to tell the community what this costs, and what it costs to keep those good people in your audience here. And stop pointing the finger at administrators and saying like, "We're chasing them off," because we're not. I'm sorry, I'm a little fired up about it. I don't like this position we're in now either. I don't like it. I don't like it. But we have a fun balance and can do it, we don't have to do it tonight. But the question is still the same. Are we going to keep and retain our teachers and pay them a comparable competitive wage or not in Tipton? Because you can absolutely count on that those people out there have financial goals, and other teachers who are not here, and your administrators, and everyone who works in the school system. Tipton has to decide they want to keep the pace. That's what's going on. We have to decide we're at a tipping point in Tipton, unintended. We have to decide.
I've got a question. Since new, I'm going to keep that crutch as long as I can.
You don't get it next month, by the way.
Hey, I'm going to ride it out for at least one more month. My question is, are we, I feel, and I don't want to speak for, I've also for the board, I feel we all want to give them the salary if we had the money, for sure. Can we do a contingency? Can we pass this salary schedule contingent on the levy passing? You know, I mean, we all say we want to do it, can we say?
But there's, that'd be the same, just coming back in April, we'll pass it next meeting right away, because you know that it's there. If it passes.
True, I just
That's why I asked the question, if we go with the minimum 40 with the grant, if we could do a $500 increase to their pay, if it does not mess up the grant process. Right? So you give everybody that $500, I can remember, it was a few years back, I was here a long time ago. Well, not too long ago. I can remember one year we got a raise, it was a $1,000 one-time deal. It wasn't included in the salary schedule, it didn't include it.
Do that, just start them.
Correct, and so that could be an option for us, if we're sending contracts now and saying, "Okay, we know it's going to be 40." We're going to do the $500 step contingent, though we're going to do it, but if, when the levy increase passes, then we're going to reevaluate that salary schedule or the recommendation made by Terry at that point.
But we can't do it as a salary step, can we? Because then that just leaves them at 40, we'd have to do it as
Well, it'd be 40, wow. They get $500 as a step, as a stipend.
Okay.
This year.
I want to make sure I was understood.
But if it passes, then we, actually in April, you can come back and, because they're going to sign their contracts. You don't think they wouldn't want a new contract in April that states, after we get our levy passed, that we go with the new recommendation, it can be done? And I'm not trying to hold you guys on, you know that, I'll fight for every one of them. But we have to, we've got to get to our community about this.
That would be free
And it's not just Tipton, it's
Everywhere.
Every school in the state is, well, not every school, because some of them are financially sound. But most of them within driving distance here of an hour are facing this.
Okay, so I'm here to table, was there a motion to table it?
I kind of like Derek's idea with the contingent of, if that's possible.
Okay.
Didn't mean to interrupt you, but I was just trying to guarantee a 40, because I don't want the 33.5 going out on a contract. Right, Dr. Rob?
What do we send out contracts?
That's how it would go, but if we say the 40 utilizing the grant
Well, this is it. The grant isn't approved yet. But you could send out 33.5, and then all of a sudden, we're on 40.
But it'd be cheaper than
We, we would know that.
The other ones, yeah.
We, we know. Yeah.
You want my opinion?
Sure.
Go ahead.
I said we'd get after it. First, I've always said, if you don't have certified good teachers down there, what do you got? What do you have? What does the town have?
Oh, you've got the building then.
And, I mean, for any, anyone else of us to sit here and think for one second that they're not going to shop? I mean, for Christ's sake, I mean, we tried this the last time, right? We ran this one other time previous, correct? I mean, you think there's some hard feelings from from some of our staff towards town? Because we always heard, "Oh, we'll get behind the teachers, we'll get behind the teachers," they had your shot. It didn't come through, right?
Right.
That's my, that's that's, that's my opinion. I mean, it shouldn't matter. I mean, it shouldn't matter.
That's what the people look for, though.
At what point are you going to do what's right for kids? At what point? That's, that's the real question we're at here.
I'm just, that's the community rumble about.
We want community support beyond this levy, the bond issue too. We, if we make a decision to do it now, and they, like Dave says, "Oh my God, they just did it anyway," we're never going to get any support.
Well, I like what Derek was saying, is that this will be the new salary schedule if the levy passes. I think that's the message we need to be sending out, if that's what you want to do.
I don't want to send a message out, I want to do what's right. I mean, message, campaign it. We're campaigning it. Should be coming. So I don't we don't need pushback from the community. But steamroller. They have, they have buy-in of this community, and this school is one of the biggest investments they've got. They have to see that.
So if teachers shop themselves, I mean, is it right to, I mean, the community's going to push back, or you don't have a certified teacher for this?
But that's every school.
And you don't have one for this. But with our team we got now, why in the hell don't we want to keep it?
Well, I don't think there's any doubt about that we want to keep the teachers
It sounds like we're doubting our community by jumping ahead of them.
Kelly, when you was down there, you wanted to keep your whole team every year, right?
Absolutely.
There you go. So that's my take on it, for what it's worth.
But we weren't fazed with government standards that were thrown at us that are unreachable.
Well, maybe reachable, but very painful.
Well, like Bo said, in seven years, though, if we don't get the cart, cart behind the horse, there may be no future. I mean, deficit spending can only go so long, but I want to support every teacher out there. My kids are in the school, I want them the best chance they got, and I believe the staff we have is that chance. But in seven years, my kids won't be out. Where could they be? Because the state's forcing us down our throat. I want them here at Tipton, I want them with this staff, I want them to go on and do better things and, you know, grow this community as much as we can maybe. I just don't want to I don't want to sink the ship, I want to keep it floating.
I just don't think we have all the cards in our hand right now.
No, I agree.
We just don't know all, we don't have, we don't have enough information yet. And I do agree that, um, it's more appropriate to let the community weigh in on this before we jump ahead of them. I just think that's the, the right thing to do. And at least after that, then we know, then we know what, what we're dealing with. And then we have to make a decision. Do we stay? We, do we make a move based on the, the levy and how, and how much of a move do we make? And then kind of go from there.
When does contracts go out?
They'll go out after this board meeting. Because you're gonna vote on all your personnel for next year in closed session today. So we'll be issuing contracts.
So the contingency wouldn't really work because of contracts going out.
It might tell your community, might tell your community that this is what the board intends to do if they will pass the levy. This is the salary increase we're giving. We're committed to giving them a salary increase that's comparable and competitive. Not a bad message. Being very transparent about what you all intend as a group. It is the language on the ballot. Thanks to Derek. Thank you.
I feel the, I don't know. I'm not speaking for you all. I think the contingency says we're telling, we're telling the community we need their support, yet we want to keep our teachers. It doesn't. I guess it doesn't sink us if we don't get the support we know we need. We can reevaluate it next meeting. But if we don't get the support we want, we've already showed we have faith in our teachers. And I guess it may be, maybe there'll be a push for the community to try, I hope, I guess, in best knowledge.
I don't see any big smiles in the audience.
So we're kind of all over the place. So what do you, what do you guys want to do?
I mean, I think I, I've voiced, I think I've said what I feel like we should do is wait until we know if we're, what our levies are required. That would be, that would be another piece of information that we could consider when we're talking about the salary schedule. That seems to be appropriate. Not only from, you know, just being responsible fiscally, but also being, I think, maybe respectful for our voters. But that's, that would be what I look at. And I hate that we have to wait a couple of weeks to find that out, but at least we would know at the end of the day what that means.
Yeah, to make a good decision, I think we do need know what that levy does.
We've, we've had reissued contracts before, Dr. Rob.
We have every year. Doug, with information coming to me and that people are already starting to interview and go outside our district, I thought it was important to get in front of this rather than be behind again. And to say exactly where we stand and so the teachers know where we stand. And I think what I'm hearing you all say is that you will pass an increase if the levy passes. Is that not what I mean?
I think so. I mean.
I think so too.
I mean, their financial stability is the reason they're going to work every day. And we've got to be competitive. I mean, you look at all the charts that you had up. I went through those for four hours Monday night. And you know, there's towns around that it's not that far to drive to to make more money. But to be responsible with our money. And it's hard to pull trigger and say, yeah, let's go ahead and jump up. But then again, I don't want to lose not one single teacher.
Say we wait.
Is that a motion?
We have to vote on that?
It's on your new business. Choosing to take no action at this time?
I would think that we either.
Table it, pass it, or go with the last year's salary schedule.
All right, I'll make the, I'll move to review the proposed salary schedule after, in the April election, after, in the April board meeting. That was terribly working.
We're gonna motion by Bo. Seconded by Amanda. Bo?
Yes.
David?
Yes.
Ashley?
Yes.
Kelly?
Yes.
Amanda?
Yes.
Yes.
I'm a no, six one. Moving on, maintenance director.
Bob is gonna give you a rundown of what has been going on along with a water line repair that he wants to talk to you about. Is that bill for that is there? Bob, take it away. Give, I asked Bob to come tonight because he has been handling a lot of different calls. And I said, Bob, I don't even think I can keep up with you right now. So why don't you come and give us just the paragraph of what's going on maintenance-wise and we get some rates going on and and ag and he's got the progress checks and this stuff. So Bob, go ahead.
All right, well, as far as the water line goes there, we've had a a water leak develop in the water line that goes from the field house down to the greenhouse, which is what they use to water all their plants with. Uh, it comes out of the ground there by the field house, runs down the drainage tile there. It's got a pretty good little string going through there. Uh, I shut the water line off to the greenhouse unfortunately right before the freeze. And then they didn't have a way to water all their plants during the freeze there, but turn it back on. It's definitely still leaking. Uh, there is a bid there. They're gonna come out. If we accept their bid, they'll come out with a hydro excavator, which we will use that sort of. We'll have a smaller hole less to clean up, less rock to bring in. Uh, we're gonna add in two, uh, how do you word this? Hydrant boxes or? Not hydrant boxes. Do what?
Meter boxes.
Meter boxes. Gonna put one in by the, the field house where it can make it easier accessible to turn the water on and off because it's they've got a four-inch piece of PVC pipe there that fills up about half full of water and you can't see the valve turn it on and off. There is three water lines that's teed somewhere underneath the pole end spot to the field house. They have no way of knowing where they're at. So we can't figure out where, which line's leaking to which hydrant. Uh, I guess shit back up. There's two hydrants in the greenhouse that they use and then they have one water line that goes to the fertilizer that mixes in with the water, then waters the plants through an overhead mixer. So there's a single line coming from the field house somewhere out there in that parking, in that gravel parking area there. It like breaks off into three different uh, water sources for the greenhouse. One of them's just a PVC piece, a piece of PVC pipe stuck through the concrete. I don't know how it's not broken yet, but it hasn't. We're gonna combine, we're gonna put a of meters, why can't I remember that? Meter box in there where we tee it off at. So, and then we're just gonna do away with the PVC line, we're gonna widen the hydrant. And that way we, if we ever have another trouble again, we can turn off one hydrant. And see if that's where the leak is or turn off the other hydrant and still have water to the greenhouse. Going forward there and we're doing the hydro excavating, we're gonna have to worry about is like running into something that's buried there that we don't know about.
Fun stuff with water lines. What I, what I also heard you say when we talked was you're fixing a bad project installation in the past. So you've come across something that wasn't quite installed very well. You're gonna go back and fix it.
Yeah, the PVC pipe just run through the concrete. If that ever breaks off, there's one, it'd be a, it's a two and a half inch pipe. It'd be a pretty good leak. And two, there would be no way to fix it.
And this has led to the greenhouse and ag not having the water that they need correctly.
That is correct.
Yep. So we just need a motion to approve that. Unless you don't, unless you have other questions for Bob, because he understands more than Dr. Rob on this.
Make a motion to approve this bid, repair the water line up here.
Motion made by Bo, seconded by David to accept all clears bid for fifty-eight hundred. So, David, I guess I can just, everybody in favor of that, seven.
Bob, quick summary of just some projects going on right now?
Uh, some of the projects that we, uh, one of the main projects that we just completed on the, from March third through the sixth, we replaced all the eight, or replaced both HVAC units in the field house as per the bid that we had from two months or before. They're up and running. In operation, uh, we got bids from Integrated Opening Solutions. We have several exterior and into interior door issues, two of which include our fire doors. Uh, bids of replacement, also the bids in or for replacement of the bathroom stalls in both the elementary bathrooms and both elementary bathrooms and the junior high bathroom. We have a door frame that needs to be replaced in the boys' locker room by the high school gym. The maintenance entrance door into the basement needs to be replaced. And there's a uh, door that needs to be replaced for the outside exit for the cafeteria. It's kind of considered like a fire exit. And it'll need the frame and the door replaced there. As we just, they sent us the bids yesterday, so I haven't had much of a chance to review them and everything, but that's just some things that we got going on there. Uh, I've contacted Higgins Asphalt, have somebody come out and look at the parking lot behind the, which would be like the high the parking lot behind the stadium there. And the student parking asphalt part of it, the asphalt's deteriorating really bad. Uh, contacted them, see if they can come and see if we can just seal it. Or if we're gonna have to come up with some other means to repair it. Football field has some irrigation issues. There's a dry hydrant is what I've learned that it's called. It is our connection from the city. City water comes in there. They have a dry hydrant in there. Which is supposed to be used for us to be able to turn the water totally off to the irrigation system. So we don't have to rely on the city to turn their water off. Uh, that is not operational and not turning off all the way. And we need to probably replace the pump that was leaking less ball when we was using it during football season. That's just some of the things we got upcoming.
So you may see some bids that are going out, guys, in the next couple of months. So people are asking you, what are you guys putting bids out for? What's this all about? Bob and I'd be working on that and we kind of get some preliminary estimates, but it's gonna be pricey. I'll tell you that. It's gonna be pricey. I looked through some of the bids you sent me just for the doors and wow.
We'll find out more on the dry hydrant. All clear. When I was talking to the gentleman that come and give us the estimate on that, he told me since they had their truck here already, they could go there and, and excavate water, hydro excavate some of the material out there so we can actually see what we're working with. And everything, make sure that we don't have bigger problems there and it'll give us a better idea of what we're gonna need to do.
All right. Any other questions? Is he in? I knew Bob had a lot to talk about. That's why I brought him in.
Rob, you never get a urinal wire, just the ones in the elementary bathrooms next to the two urinals alone.
That would be under all the replacement of all of it, right?
Yeah.
Yeah, the ones we're looking to replace, replace them all.
Okay, so that's still on them.
Uh, that, that's what that was. I hadn't get preliminary. What was it like twelve, fifteen thousand dollars to get all those?
Said I just skimmed through.
It's a lot. We'll make a, we'll make a spreadsheet for you and kind of show you.
I have a question too, actually. We've discussed in the past about getting rid of those buildings up there by the practice school.
Coach Duke's building probably needs to be replaced. I know Bob's done some temporary bits of damage to Bob or somebody has, or Jason. Coach Duke, you want to talk about yours? Is that what you're talking about?
Yeah, we, when we did that tour, we talked about that.
Yes.
Uh, they're just still in the same shape. I mean, the floor's run that long.
The equipment shed, the cylinder blocks holding it up have all shifted. So the building is about to fall down.
Nice.
Um, so at some point it's just gonna, gonna go off. I put the metal back on the side of the building a couple of times myself. There's a big hole in the floor. I don't know how many rodents find their house in there for the winter. Uh, but literally the cylinder blocks, and I can send you a picture if you want. The building's gonna fall right off.
Just check it out when I go up.
Yeah. Yeah, saw it Wednesday or whatever, the nineteenth. Be a good time to look at it. I don't, you don't, you don't want to go in it. I mean, there's a three-foot hole in the step in the building into the equipment shed where the equipment is. And that's just how it spins since I got here. But it is starting to fall off the cylinder blocks now, so that has to be, you have to make arrangements.
What are we using oil ag building for? What's getting stored in there?
Bob?
Junk stuff?
It was kind of cleaned out for a while.
I was just thinking, I know there's an, oh, there's what we call the paintless there. No, we have enough room? We can move football equipment into there? Because I think it's got an outside door to you, don't it?
Into which part?
Bill, I call it the, Bill paint, the far left.
The far left?
Yeah.
No, it doesn't have a, you'd have to go through the whole building to use it, but my future plans for it to put all the mowing stuff and equipment in there.
I still know, we've got a bunch of crap in there that we don't need. Do we need to have a clean out day and?
Yes.
We got, so in the building. I was just thinking, if we need, if that building Dr. Duke's using is crap, why don't we move it, get this cleaned out and have a good storage spot?
I had this for a look at it too, just. I said, can we repair it?
Which one? What? Mr. Twinner's here. If you guys want to talk to him, we can keep from having a Wednesday night meeting.
Yeah.
You guys want to talk to him? Okay. That's fine.
Look at the storage building all over there.
Yeah, perfect. Mr. Twinner, they'd like to meet with you at six o'clock on Wednesday.
But, but you may have contests, so we may have to.
It's okay. We can, we can look at it anyway.
Have a look at this.
Can I record you? Happy? No, I saw you guys right now.
Yeah, I'm good.
Six o'clock, okay?
We're gonna meet on the hill. We're gonna meet on that hill.
All right, is everybody good?
Yeah.
All right, I'm moving to send an executive session pursuant to six one zero point zero. We want to discuss three, six, and thirteen. Include the Board of Education, Dr. Rob, um, Mr. Culpepper, Mrs. Bestian, Ms. Thomas, Ms. Pettigrew.
We got a motion to Bo.
Second. Second by David. Bo?
Yes.
David, yes. Ashley?
Yes.
Kelly?
Yep.
Amanda? Derek? Myself, yes, seven oh.